At this point in time, I would ask the Chair to open the annual public hearing on the school budget. The purpose of the public hearing is to give the public an opportunity to make comments on the school budget.
Okay, I am opening the budget hearing of April 13th.
At this point in time, if there are any members of the public would like a copy of the school department budget, if you could see Diane Sanek, she has copies. Does anyone want one?
It's the same.
Just for convenience sake, no, there's no change. Anyone else?
Program of study.
And as is customary, I'm going to turn the hearing over to the school business administrator, Mr. Matthew Gillis. Mr. Gillis?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Terrell. Does everybody have a copy? Our budget has not changed at this point. We realize there is a difference between what the town manager recommends, and we're still working on that. Right now, there's a difference of $192,299 from what was proposed to the school committee, and we're working on how we're going to bridge that gap in a manner that is the least, has the least amount of impact on the educational services that we provide to students and providing them in a, continue to provide them in a safe environment. We expect to have that answer in another week to two weeks, and we'll update folks then. Right now, it's still in the administrative level.
Okay, I will open it up to comments from the school committee. Eric, did you want to start, or David?
Sure, I actually have a couple of questions that have been sent to me from members of the public. And one asked six questions, and I was pretty sure I knew five of the answers, but I wanted to double check and also get an answer to the fifth one. So, on the Memorial Middle School salaries on classroom teachers, there is an increase of $63,000 between the FY 15 and FY 16 budget. And if I recall, I think that's the instructional coach for mathematics, but I wanted to double check.
That's correct.
Okay, so I got one right. Number two was, oh, in the other salaries and expenses, there's an increase in what we show for contractual agreements and others.
Can I go back to your first question?
Sure.
Thirty thousand dollars of that is for the instructional coach, and the remainder is steps and column changes for the co and staff.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense.
On other salaries and expenses, the line items for contractual agreements, other salary obligations, legal settlement, severance pay, the great majority of that, as we've explained previously, I understand, is kind of what we've reserved for ongoing contract negotiations.
Correct.
Number three.
Wow, go to the head of the class.
You're doing great. You're on fire, Eric.
This is the last one that I have to ask about.
And Matt will handle that one.
Okay. Actually, system-wide administration expenses, system technology, there's an increase of $60,000.
And the reason for that is that we were able to fund it last year out of the capital budget. Our capital budget was increased, and this year it's in the operating.
And that's for the iPad program, or?
The iPad program is in there.
Okay. Number four, on Memorial Middle School expenses, there's a $20,000 increase in textbooks. This one's easy, they're buying textbooks. Or, I believe, the math, I recall it was sixth and seventh grade math?
Yes.
Yes.
And the good news there is we're going to be able to reduce that line item because the publisher has sharpened his pencil, or her pencil.
All right, and if I recall, we piloted the new textbooks last year.
Yes.
We'll be able to pilot them for next year. Number five is transportation. School transportation went up by $59,000, and it's my understanding that we have a new contract that went out to bid for school transportation, and that's?
We have a new contract, and we were very pleased with the low bidder price. It's North River Bus Company, and in checking with our colleagues, our increase is lower than that of most people, so we're very pleased there.
All right.
You up to number six yet?
I am.
Okay, that's Matt Gillis's.
Number six, maintenance expenses. This one, it was a total of $19,000, which I give kudos to the person that noticed this. But basically, it looks like our telephone bills are going up between the elementary school, the middle school, the high school, and the central office, and if you could just explain that.
Yep, our telephone bills are going up a little bit. You know, we've changed the way we do business a little bit, and there was a federal program called E-Rate where we used to be able to offset some of those expenses for telecommunications. We didn't have a choice. Part of the, part of the bill was you would pay a fee into the program on your phone bills, and the federal government would reimburse schools and libraries to improve their telecommunications. The program's been going on for quite some time. They're phasing out telecommunications part of it, and now it's just going to be technology-related and data, you know, interconnectivity and database webs, no, not the web, but routers and servers, switches, things of that nature. And so, that changes what's available, and so, the result is our telephone expenses are going to go up a little bit, our technology expenses.
It's going down.
That's another part of the reason, smaller part, but why our technology expense is going up. And we're hoping that every time they change the federal program, it seems like a little bit less trickles down to us. So, we're being cautious with what, what we're going to get there. If we happen to get a little more from the federal program, then, you know, we'll be asking for less technology in the future, but we don't want to, we don't want to count those chickens before they hatch, so to speak.
Okay, thank you. And I had another sort of series of questions, all those sort of paraphrases. I don't know the actual answer to this. Basically, question about other towns of similar size, whether they also have an assistant superintendent and assistant principals at our, at their various schools.
I will tell you that towns our size may have someone who has similar responsibilities, similar duties, and may or may not have the title. Sometimes the person is called Director of Curriculum, if you'll recall, that was Laura Moselli's title. Joy Turby with her qualifications, and her licensure was an assistant superintendent. Laura Moselli was the Director of Curriculum, and Judy Keen certainly earns and deserves the title. So, it's more of a title thing than a position, and yes, towns our size have someone in that position. Cohasset has someone in that position.
No, that's my understanding.
No, yeah, no.
Someone else who?
And I think it's a fair question. Regarding assistant principals, the, certainly at a school the size of the Jacob School, yes. Certainly at the size of the high school, yes. The middle school, with the middle school enrollment, I think a reasonable educator could make either decision. We tried running the middle school without an assistant principal, and it's far more effective with an assistant principal.
And particularly, one of the reasons why we brought back the assistant principal to the middle school was because of the change in the teacher evaluation system, which is much more.
And we learned the hard way.
Intensive. So, okay, thank you very much.
What's up? Michelle?
I went through it. It's very educationally based, and I think it's very transparent, line by line. I'm very impressed that people emailed you questions. I am really jealous right now.
I can forward them to you from the log.
No, but I just think it's great that people are looking at the budget, and so, that's basically. David?
Well, I would also just note, we actually have many more members of the public than we typically do at one of these, so, thank you.
David?
I have a number of questions, and I have a comment to start. I kind of, like, I'm kind of a little bit confused about this yet. I know we go through this every single year, and it kind of drives me absolutely crazy.
The short put.
What's that? So, I know that, you know, the town gave us a number, an amount, or whatever, and, you know, once again, you know, we're saying we have a as needs or a needs budget, and so, that's more than what the town can afford to give us. So, we get this budget, so I feel like, you know, I can sit here and I can go through, I have a lot of questions, I can go through and chuck them all off or whatever, but then in two weeks, or a month, or two months, or whatever it's going to be, after town meeting or before town meeting, we're going to get a whole nother budget, and I'm going to have to review that, and basically go through the same exact expedition here that I'm about to do. So, I just, I guess, a couple of questions. What is the plan at this point? So, I mean, I'm not, to be honest with you, between, you know, I'm not going to vote on this budget because it's, I know it's not the real budget. So, it's just a complete, it just doesn't make any sense.
I wouldn't want the school committee to vote tonight.
So, do you still want me to go through this whole thing? Because I really, these numbers are going to change. I mean, I mean, because you're going to have to make, you're going to have to lower it to get to the town's number.
And, and right for starters, we had put in for another instructional coach, and to increase a position at the high school from .8 to 1.0. I don't see that we'll be able to do that. We weren't even putting in for an instructional coach. We were planning to redeploy a teacher's position to that of an instructional coach, but I don't think we'll have that opportunity.
So, I guess I'll go through and ask you the questions, but.
I agree, I think you should.
I just kind of, I guess you can tell in my tone, I guess, I'm just kind of frustrated with this whole process, because I just feel like, I want to deal with something that's the actual budget, I don't want to be dealing with, like, I know this is what we need, but I just, it's just like the same thing over and over every single year, and it's just, it's just really starting to bother me, I got to tell you that. So, that's just my opinion. So, starting at the top, so I did notice on page one, it has like, school committee travel, and dues and expenses, that's zero percent. I was also looking at, on the second page, it talks about, you know, the superintendent, the central office, the, you know, their raises. So, in those columns, there's no raise. But then when I go to the Jacob School, I don't know what page it's on, but when I go to the Jacob School and it has all the salaries, it actually has a number that says three percent. So, are you saying that the salaries are all going to be three percent? Because if it is, then all these numbers are wrong.
No, absolutely not. The salary increases that you see in this budget for lane changes and a degree change, or if a teacher gets a step?
So, like, when I go to page four, I'm looking at the Jacob's Elementary School salaries, I see administrators up at the top, so I assume that's the principals, and I see, I actually see a number there. But then, when I look at the other schools, and I look at the superintendent's office, I don't see any numbers there. I see no, well, I see like, basically the same exact.
None of the, no raises are placed in the line items because we have open contracts with the school custodians, the paraprofessionals, and the teachers. So, it wouldn't be prudent to, or, and it would not be an appropriate way to bargain a contract to have the number there.
I don't think I'm asking the question.
Okay, maybe I'm not answering it.
So, this is the question. So, I'm looking on page two, and I see the central office.
Yes.
No raises on there, all zero, like, they're all the, from fiscal year 15 to 16, zero raise. But then, when I go to the Jacob School, and I look at administrators, which again, I assume it's the principal and assistant principal, is one of them getting a lane change? Or are they getting?
No, they, the principal and the assistant principal received a raise in the fall.
But why isn't it in here?
After the budget was done. So, that budgeted number for the 199 for FY 15 was what we budgeted, and in the fall, they received a salary adjustment when we looked at the comparable salaries. So, that 205 number is reflective of what they're actually receiving in fiscal 15, but it's.
I think it might, I think you're off, Kathleen. I mean, you guys can go look at it later on, but I think you're a little off.
So, take a look at that.
Maybe I'm not understanding it, because to me, everybody else, fiscal year 15, you have what they actually, what the actual budget is.
No, because it was $6,000, the combined raise, for the Jacob School principal and assistant principal, that they received after the fiscal year started, but it was retroactive to July 1.
Okay. So, the next one I have.
And I think the numbers were 3,500 and 2,500.
Okay. So, and I have a couple of other ones, I just got to find them. So, again, I think, I think Eric already asked this question on page six, talks about classroom teachers, he said that's a math, somebody going to bring in for math, I guess.
It's the math coach that's in this budget, but in all likelihood, we won't be able to do that.
And then I got, I think Eric might have asked this question already about contractual services. So, it says that's going to go up 24,000, I think?
That's raises for, for open contracts.
And then the other one is out-of-district tuition, so that one looks like it's going down, so I was just wondering, so I assume that you basically surveyed the students, or you did some sort of, you looked at your student information database, and basically came out with a number of students that are going to be going out of district?
Whether they were aging out, or?
And, the other one I looked at was the high school adjustment counselor, I think, did Eric, did you ask that question already? That was, that was like an $18,000 at that point.
That individual is a .8 adjustment counselor. The high school principal has asked that she be made full-time. I agree with that request, and reluctantly, it looks like we'll have to defer that.
Okay.
She works, she doesn't work on Mondays. Is that the day she, she doesn't work on Mondays, and students have needs on Mondays.
Well, they're not allowed to anymore.
And then the next one I have here is, I assume that you have more ESL students, because that's going up?
Yes, I think that's gone up by two students.
What is ESL?
English as a Second Language. We're mandated, students have civil rights, and we have to provide that educational, educational opportunity.
Unfunded mandates, just saying. Unfunded mandate, whether we have students who, whether we have those students or not, we have to have a funding in place for it?
We have the students.
Right now, but before we?
We actually take the employee and hire the individual .4, .6, .8, .5, depending on how many students we have.
Then I have, page 13, there's the maintenance expenses. So, I looked at the actuals for 13 and 14, which were like 59 and 54,000, and for this year, we budgeted 65, but then, for some reason, this year, we're dropping it to 45, so, is it something, like, we have all new equipment or something? Because to me, it should be at least the same.
Well, it's maintenance of buildings and utilities and all, I'm going to turn that over to Matt.
Yeah, David, for, for that exercise, we chose to make the reduction in just the one-line item instead of dispersing it amongst the others, but there are some repairs that we've made in the last couple of years that we're pretty confident we don't have to revisit for this budget year. Going forward, you know, the next few years, that line item probably is going to go back up.
And I think that's about it, but again, I just, I don't know, just don't really, I don't really agree with this whole process. I think I've said it in the past, and I just think we should be dealing with the real budget. I just think it's almost like, I don't want to say it's a waste of time, but I just know this is all going to change, and then I'll be calculating this whole thing out again. So, it's kind of, I guess it's kind of frustrating.
I would just echo that a little bit, in that I understand this budget originally came out November 3rd, 2014, and it was your best estimate at that time, and this is what our needs were going to be, and this is what we sent to town manager, as he requests budgets from all the town departments. But I would, obviously, you know, being on the Budget Subcommittee, I know a little more about where things are headed as we get closer to the town meeting appropriation and how we're going to meet that. But I do agree with David, I think we should amend this budget and update it at least once before we get there.
Okay. Also?
Well, I just have, I'm going to kind of go off the, off the tracks here a little bit. I've kind of been struggling, struggling with this for a while, and one of the things I think that we really need to look at, I know that we're all talking about the school consolidation at the middle school, and we've had various meetings about that with the advisory committee, we actually had a meeting with the capital planning committee, but I really think that, you know, I understand all the reasons, and I'm totally on board that we shouldn't probably do that consolidation right now. I think at some point in time, we're going to have to revisit that, and whether it's through the hiring a consultant, or, I'm not sure if we're going to do that or not, that's kind of like over to the town side right now. But, you know, if we end up doing that, then I think, you know, obviously, we'll look at, you know, whether we're going to do that consolidation or not. But at some point in time, when we get to some number, I don't know what that number is, we're probably going to have to do it, just based on enrollments, I mean, unfortunately. But the other thing, I think, you know, I think, you know, I kind of got involved with the school committee to kind of move the schools forward and to do what's in the best interest of the students. And so, I really think that one of the areas that we can look at, and it was kind of brought up at one of the advisory committee, or at the, yeah, actually, it was the advisory committee meeting, you know, we should look at, is there ways that we can consolidate positions? Not necessarily the teaching positions, because that's part of the union, and it's teaching, but I think there's other areas of the schools that we can look at with the town, because I'm sure the town has, I just think there's duplicity of work between the schools and the town, whether it's the fire department, there might be someone that's working on purchase orders, there might be somebody at the police department that's working on purchase orders, we're working all on the same exact accounting system. So, when you're working on the same systems, there should be some efficiencies there. So, I know, like, I worked in higher ed at one point, we brought in a whole new student information database, and what they did was they brought in the BRS's office, where you pay your bills, the registrar, financial aid, they brought all those offices together, and they have one student services office. So, looking at that type of model, why can't, I just feel like we should either maybe approach the Board of Selectmen as part of this. I think I was watching the Board of Selectmen's meeting last week, and they were talking about having the school committee come back to one of their meetings. So, one of the things I think we should look at, maybe have a subcommittee, I know that the school committee did this about five or six years ago, but I think we should look at it again, where are there any areas of efficiency that we can gain? And I think if we're going to go for this debt exclusion that we've been talking about, I'm not sure if we're going to do that next year or whatever, but we got to go to the public, and I've heard this from, you know, Mr. Brandon's brought this up, and some other people have been watching TV or whatever, my busy life, but I mean, I think they bring up a good point. I mean, if you're going to try to bring this forward, to do this debt exclusion, we got to show a good faith, and we're not going to consolidate the schools, and I totally, I'm on board with that, but we got to start looking at, you know, we got to have a little bit into this game, too. We got to kind of say, all right, well, where can we make efficiencies? Where, and this will have no effect on the education of the students. This is just operational stuff that we can look at. So, I know that Stephanie's not here tonight, maybe we, I don't know if you guys want to, you know, maybe have a subcommittee at some point set up, where two members from the school committee and two members from the Board of Selectmen, superintendent and the town manager, all get together and kind of, hey, there's some other people that have great ideas, I don't know what the ideas are, but I have a couple of ideas, but, you know, I think when we get the right people in the right room, we can kind of flush everything out, and maybe there's things that I'm not even thinking about, that other people are thinking about that we could do. So, that's just my, it's kind of like, not to go on a tangent, but I just feel like, that's the type of thing we need to start looking at. And I think this budget, I've been watching the Selectmen's meeting, I watched Phil the other night, he said our budget is not going to increase more than three percent, we're at three percent for the next several years or whatever, and I think we got to start looking at, all right, if we're not going to consolidate the schools, where else can we make some changes? We got to change, because if you look at any organization since like 2008, the organizations, whether they're private or they're public, the ones that change are the ones that survive. And if we continue doing business the way we always have done business, we're just going to keep falling behind. We just got to start taking a move. I mean, I know it's probably not a popular thing for me to talk about, but I think it is something, that if we're going to be leaders, we got to, you know, lead. So, that's how I look at it. I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but.
Is this something we should discuss when Stephanie is here?
Yeah, I think we should have a full board here, but I think it's something that should be put on the agenda and flushed out, and this is just my opinion, you guys, I don't know what Eric thinks, what Michelle thinks, but that's just.
Let's see what they think. Eric?
No, I would, I don't think it's fair to say that this organization, being the whole public school district, hasn't changed since 2008, because it's definitely changed tremendously, in some ways for the better, in some ways not. As we went through, was it the fiscal year 10, where we had the budget A and budget B, that first year of the debt exclusion that didn't pass, and there were tremendous cuts to the budget, which hurt in a lot of areas, but in some ways, I think it was good, both on the town side and the school side, in that it did force a lot of new thinking and way to, or you see a little bit about tonight, about the tremendous work that a lot of people have done to keep programs going, where funding just evaporated. I don't disagree with you on trying to take further steps to become more efficient in positions, especially, obviously, you know, this is an education business, so that, to the extent that we can become more efficient administratively, both the schools and the town and the whole bit, you know, we, there's been talk about, you know, looking to regionalize in the past, you know, the town does it with the 911 service, you know, there were definitely, you know, communications with other towns in the past, you know, whatever we can do, I fully support that idea of trying to become more efficient. But I don't think it's, it's fair to say that nothing's changed in a long time.
No, I probably, you know, I, maybe I said that, but I didn't mean it like we didn't change. I mean, obviously, I think that Kathleen has done a tremendous job on moving this district forward, we got the Blue Ribbon Award, and so, by that way, you know, definitely we've made, we've gone leaps and bounds from where we were, but I think that we still got to, we can't just take our eye off the ball and say, okay, and become complacent and say, all right, we're fine, we got to keep moving this thing.
I agree.
It's a big train, and, you know, it's either get on board or stay at the station, but.
Always room for improvement, and always room to, to share ideas and everything, but as long as it doesn't hurt the education of the students of the town itself.
So, I would think this is something that could go on an agenda, probably, maybe the next agenda, or whenever we can do it, and have further discussion on it.
Or maybe even after town meeting.
Yeah, I'm on a rush to do it, but I do think it is something that we should talk about, and then if the committee agrees or would like to do it, we should have a subcommittee, get some people from the Board of Selectmen, and then meet together, talk about it, maybe other people have some other ideas, and then see where it all goes.
I think that's a good idea. I mean, it's always good to look at new, new ways of doing things, investigating it. Good, thank you, David.
Thanks.
Sure. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, couldn't see you, no glasses, Dennis, go ahead.
That's why I used my. I just want to support David's commentary, and I'm really glad that Dick Kenny is here, because I do recall my years on the advisory board, we had plenty conversations about the consolidation of all of the accounting functions within the whole community, but as you all know, I don't always remember all these things very clearly, so that's why I'm happy he's here. But your point, David, was exactly what we had talked about, so I would believe that the advisory board may still have it on their agenda or conversation, because it makes sense. And just yesterday, I believe, in the Boston Globe, there was an article about how schools are doing exactly what you described, collaborating on working with, not regional, but neighboring systems to take care of the English as a second language, or in some of the special ed situations. And I know you all have been doing that for years, but I believe that's what I'm hearing you speak to. Let's elevate the level of creative thinking about how we can maximize what we have, especially in the area of operational efficiencies that isn't necessarily going to affect the instructional component. So, thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, Dennis.
And Dick, I hope you can support or tell them if that really happened.
It did.
It did, okay.
And we're glad you're here.
You went asleep, you were.
Any other questions?
I know, um, I know that there's an allocation for $90,000, I think, from capital budget to go towards the purchase of iPads.
True. Who would like to address that?
How do you for, I noticed also that in the middle school, the iPads are for the whole middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade all have one-to-one program. How do you justify the cost of $27,000 for textbooks online? How are teachers, I know there's 14 out of the 22 teachers there are somewhat new, how are you kind of integrating the one-to-one and then the purchase of the textbooks? I know it does say online textbooks, but I know, I'm a technology integrationist, and I was just wondering how the teachers are just using resources that are online and available and kind of creating their own classes within using the one-to-one? I'm looking for, sorry.
Go ahead.
And I'm just curious about that, and how justify that cost?
I'm not sure I understand your, your question.
My question is, how do you justify that $27,000 for textbook purchases, print and online, and have the nine?
It's not, it's not.
It's going to be less than that, too.
It says here it says print and online.
We buy, we buy a classroom set, which is, it's actually part of the purchase, it really doesn't cost you anything additional when you consider the amount you save, save buying the online textbook. In case you have that incident of the power going out or the internet being down, instruction doesn't stop, the teacher can still say, please open your book to page 137, we're going to be looking at section 4.8 today. Or we have an instance of a student on an IEP that has to have a set of books for whatever reason, whether they have a visual impairment or a... reason, whether they have a visual impairment, or it's just how their, their brain is wired and they need to see book, books in a hard print. So we always have some hard copy books available in addition to the, the online, but it's not one-to-one print book in addition to the online version. And there actually is a cost savings in buying the online version package, as opposed to buying the print package alone.
Why is it so high?
It's also a seven-year license.
We're going to redo, it's a seven-year.
Seven-year license, and every year, if there's an update to the textbook, because it's online, it's done automatically within the license, so it's a seven-year license. And that, that will be reduced, because we did a pilot in grade six for our Glencoe Math, and so we're going to be purchasing it next year, but we're going to do the pilot in grade seven, so we're going to put off the cost for one year. So it won't be 27,000 next year.
What do you estimate that to be for next year?
Fifteen-ish.
What?
I, we're working on that number, I think we'll be able to reduce that to 15.
So from that point on, you're approximately nearly costing $15,000?
No, there'd be no cost.
Right, there'll be no cost.
Because it's a seven-year license that you purchased.
Okay, so we have to.
The other thing about the print that is in there, at no additional, because so many kids are used to using paper, and so many teachers are used to using paper, at no additional cost, they supply you paperwork books, I think for the first three years of the license, to kind of help wean students and teachers off of the, the paper version, so it's included, there's no additional cost to it for the first three years. Is that, am I stating that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay.
And so the $90,000 that's actually being allocated for the schools through the capital budget, how does that, what happens next year when you have to keep replenishing those, those iPads? Like, that's a cost that's going to keep growing and growing, and also too, what happens if a student damages them or so forth? And then all of the kind of plumbing, the infrastructure piece to help it run as it's going? I just feel like that, and also, I'm just curious myself, out of the assessment, ongoing assessment and training of the teachers to implement that piece, how does that all kind of come together? Because as someone who kind of lives in that world, how, how are you bridging these new teachers coming in and the classroom management and the rollout of that? And assessing actually, is it a benefit? Because I know in the education world right now, that's a big conversation. Is there really a legitimate benefit to one-to-one environments? And, and, you know, some are saying, you know, we're creating an environment of like snacking versus like having a male because we're constantly changing, you know, in electronic formats versus physical being. I guess it's a bigger conversation with budget, but one-to-one program that kind of emphasizes that is a huge strain on the budget. It's going to continually grow, and I'm just wondering how that's going to be allocated, if it's always going to be a capital budget item, or is it going to start to be absorbed into the school budget?
I'm not sure I understand the last part of your question. Kelly.
Can I, I think I know that part, if I may. Basically, that came up in that meeting we had with the advisory board, that the $90,000 that was coming from the capital budget from the town is being dedicated to purchase iPads. Now, not being technically adept, I do know that those things, if you have them for a year or two, they need to be upgraded, and I believe the question is, what's the plan to then replace them over time, and how would that impact the school budget, because it's not going to come from the town, unless the town is deciding to subsidize each year with another proportional amount of the $90,000?
We have a loaner program, will you talk about that, Tony? Thank you.
Yeah, so you asked a lot of questions, or whatever, what happens when one breaks? For basically the cost of an iPad, because we're buying in bulk, we get Apple Care at no additional expense, so students can, I shouldn't say students can. They can, but they can, if an iPad is damaged twice, it's replaced at absolutely no charge to the school district. The family does incur a $50 fee to replace it. We have not had any problems with the family at all complaining or arguing about that $50 fee. We do get to the point of where we're at the end of that two-year program, and then what do we do? We have about 18 loners in the building that stay in the building, the kids don't take them home at that point, but they do have them in the building to use as part of the regular instruction during, during the course of the day. And we bought these bright orange shockproof iPad covers that you can't miss from a mile away, so that everybody knows who's those, who has the loners, so that they don't leave the building. But every, every student while they're in the building has the opportunity to have an iPad during the course of the day.
And I think, I think, at least I understand that, and I don't want to speak to you, but my, my question would be, in two years, when the iPad now is the iPad 79, and you have to buy a new one, where are we going to get the money for that? That's really the, the underlying question, because I learned this from Dick and the advisory board, one-time income is nice and fun, but reoccurring income is what we need. There's got to be a stream of income that is consistent, so that really, I think, is the question that people will ask. How are we going to keep that line item funded for the duration of technological improvement over time?
Do we keep answering?
I don't think there was another question out there, is there?
Yeah, how, how are we going to manage the budget, knowing that technology will keep moving even if we don't?
Well, the school department has been funding and using the capital budget, and I hope we're able to continue to do that.
I think you could basically ask that same question, if you look at overall technology. I mean, that's one of the difficult parts for all public schools, is to try to keep up with technologies changing, even if you work in higher ed or you work in private sector, I mean.
Exactly.
So, so I mean, it's just kind of a moving target, but I do think that textbooks, I think, are on, are on iPads, you can get, download them or whatever, so I think there's going to be a savings right there, so there might be some offsetting stuff that we want.
All I'm really saying is people will want to know that, especially when it comes to that at-town meeting, hold, there are going to be people who will hold that, specifically because it's a hot button. So everything that we can do to educate and inform what the long-term plan is will really be beneficial.
So I guess, just to, is the expectation that. Could you just identify? I'm sorry, I'm children art. Is the expectation that year after year that the capital budget will fund the iPads, or is that going to be absorbed, or do you have an expectation?
At this point in time, that is our plan.
That it will be in the capital budget?
Yes.
Can I just clarify? I mean, it's not $90,000 this year just to replace previously broken ones, we're actually slowly expanding this program. It started as a pilot program one year in the sixth grade, which was fully funded by the school department, and then the following year, it expanded to the seventh and eighth grade, so it did fit the whole middle school. And then this year, it's expanded to the ninth grade, and the bulk of this $90,000 will be to expand it to the 10th grade here at the high school next year.
And for some of the infrastructure.
Which we've been doing all along, obviously.
Mr. Kenny? I'm sorry, Matt, did you want to say something?
Yeah, one of the reasons for the, the one-to-one technology, we chose iPads here, is because we're going to have, the kids are going to have to start taking their tests in an online capacity for standardized testing. So it's not just Hull, but most school systems in Massachusetts are doing the same thing or something, something very similar, so that they can have a great number of students taking their test online, because that's the way we're going to be required to take it. I mean, this is, you know, in a sense, another one of those unfunded mandates. But, you know, we're not doing it because it's, it's simply a want-to, it's going to be a have-to, and we'd rather have the children be ready when that time comes, that it is a have-to, if, if anybody else wants to add to that.
Yeah, I think it's in two years that everybody's going to have to take part on the computer.
And many departments fund things through the capital budget, police cars, all sorts of equipment are funded that way.
They get laptops or something in the prisons.
Yeah, so, so it's a plan that the town has used, whether that has to be revisited or not, I don't know at this point.
Dick, did you have something you want to say?
Dick Kenny, the past three years, we've had 80,000 in the capital budget, and I assume that we'll be continuing. We're looking at all capital, and that's one of the things we're going to do, is try to expand what's currently happening. I mean, we've got a lot of other capital problems besides that, but that's one that's very important, so I'd like to stay, stay on the top of the list.
Thank you. Susan?
So, can we talk about specifics to budget, that, do I understand you correctly that this is a budget, the budget that's online now is the budget that you presented in November?
Yes.
Without change?
Yes.
And will town meeting voters have a change in budget before?
I think so.
Sure. Okay. So, this budget doesn't, how, did you, I'm sorry, I don't know who to.
The chair.
So, so, looking at the numbers, they seem to be fairly soft in terms of, you haven't yet finished your teachers' contract negotiations, right?
Correct.
But, so is there a percentage that you plugged in to, to, for raises?
I'm taking.
Right, you had to presuppose some number?
Yes, and it would not be a good bargaining strategy for me to reveal exactly what that number is, but I will tell you, it's conservative and it's reflective of what the school committee can pay.
If you want us to keep it as low as possible, we shouldn't give it away.
I'm just asking.
No, and I think you can, and I think you can see my point, that it would not be a good negotiating strategy to discuss that here.
But you had to factor something in.
I did, yes.
And the voters, you know, at town meeting, they're going to be saying, you know, will you be finished with negotiations before town meeting?
No.
Okay. Do you have a number factored in for other raises, non-union raises?
We do.
Administrative raises?
We do.
Could you tell me what that number is?
At this point in time, I can't, because I haven't sat down with the administrators to discuss their wages for next year.
Will you tell the voters how much administrators will be getting for a raise before town meeting?
I won't know that before town meeting. I usually don't know that till June or July.
This year, you have 30 fewer students than you had last year, and looking at the numbers for next year, it looks like you don't have at least 30 less than you have this year. I'm just looking at the numbers between the undergraduates and seniors and the numbers of pre-k and, you know, and pre-morand, but you're down at least 30 next year, so you're talking a swing of 60 students in two years, so.
I would look at the pre-k number as a real projection of what our kindergarten.
No, but you should look at the kindergarten number of 57 and extrapolate, it's not likely that there'll be a huge swing.
We're losing a large senior class, and there's no evidence that we'll be having a large kindergarten.
Exactly. So you've lost, you lost 30 last year, and you're going to lose 30 this year. The likelihood is that you are with the new elementary school opening in Hall this year and, so I'm just saying, have you thought about those numbers? How could a declining enrollment of, say, 60 within two years be, how is that reflected in your budget? Have you cut teachers, have you cut staff, have you reallocated?
I believe that we'll have three first grades next year rather than four, and that's reflected in the budget.
In terms of your budget, is, is there a savings in salaries?
There'd be one fewer first grade teacher, yes.
And have you expanded someplace else?
My intention was to retake that position and have, not necessarily the same employee, but use that position as a math coach, but I don't think we'll be able to do that.
Because of the requested budget and town manager's budget?
Correct.
So, can we talk about, over the last three years, you've had about $37 million in revenues, and you've returned $11,000 total, at the end of the year, to the general fund? So, does that, so do you spend down at the end of the year?
I don't know what you mean by spend down.
Okay, so.
Do we spend money at the end?
On April 1st, at this time of the year, I assume that some of that, Matt, you're looking at the numbers in the various accounts or whatever, and I guess what I'm asking is, are you making purchases at the end of the year so that you don't have to turn, turn money down to the general fund?
Absolutely not. We're making purchases and doing things to protect the buildings to, last year, we did quite a bit of waterproofing of the buildings, we did the masonry work at the memorial school, which has to be redone after this winter. We had the front masonry work at the Jacob School done, we did all sorts of waterproofing of the windows and sealed the windows at the high school, we had some water damage. So we've done important projects to maintain the buildings.
With the money, at the end of the year?
Yes.
Matt, do you?
Yeah, throughout the year, some of the maintenance projects that we hope to do, we do wait until the end of the year, because sometimes things will break and we have to do them, or staff changes or student changes could happen and we're required to make payments. So some of the maintenance projects, you know, that you'll see happen more in the springtime or in the beginning of the summer, are because, not that we didn't want to do them earlier in some cases, it's because we wanted to make sure we had the money to finance them and pay for them. You don't want to, you know, be in a position at the end of the year where we're trying to figure out, can we, can we do anything, are we, are we going to be able to buy the cleaning supplies to get started for the summer, or are we going to have to wait until July 1, for example? So we're not holding back for the sake of holding back, we're holding back because we basically have one bite at the apple, and we're going to live within our budget. And I know there's sometimes some frustration with what we're asking for, and it seems like that's more than what we can get of late from the town, but we're just telling people what we need and what we, what we want to do in order to continue to move the system forward. So, you know, all that being said, we're, we're not spending it down just so that we don't give it back. We're holding, we're holding on to it to make sure we can do everything it is that we're required to do, whether it be building code related, or student related, or staff related.
So, and that's what I was asking you, is there a list of projects that you, that you have, and does the school committee have a role in that? Do you make, do you all talk about what the goals are and what needs to be done, and do you set policy, or does that go up, or, policy directive, does it go up or down? Do you have a role?
The school committee has made it quite clear that they want us to maintain the facilities.
Right.
They certainly don't get involved in the nitty-gritty that the, all the windows in the front office and the conference room at the high school were leaking, and, but they make it clear that they want the buildings maintained, they want us to continue with waterproofing of the buildings.
If you're asking if it's brought to us, to our attention, and we're asked our opinion on whether this or that, yes, we're kept informed.
It's done through the budget subcommittee. So as they get towards the end of the fiscal year, Matt will make kind of like a projection of what he's anticipating that he may have left, and I think the budget subcommittee kind of talks to him about it, and then they kind of prioritize, all right, if we have some money left, these are the things we'd like to do that we've been holding off of, from doing, so I think that's kind of.
And it's all from deferring projects throughout the year in case we have some catastrophic expenses.
The other thing is, we've actually given some monies to even like the athletic department as far as reconditioning, some of the football equipment or the athletic equipment, I think one year, maybe last year, I'm not quite sure, we might have purchased the, the theater play ahead of time, because we had some monies left, so that, just to kind of like make some of these things so that it's a little bit smoother with the next year coming up, so.
So they're not starting below zero.
So, I don't mean to monopolize, but since you're all here, just make it easier. I'm sorry, what?
It's a public meeting.
Exactly. So, going to the Superior Educational Collaborative, the schools rent seven classrooms to the collective.
Yes.
And you realize, I think it's $500 per class, per month?
$6,000 annual. Six thousand annually, a total of $42,000.
Right. So, how rents, and also I think Hannon and Wayman and whatever...
Situates.
Is that same amount of rent for everybody?
Yes.
It is. And you don't have to account for that? That doesn't get turned into the general fund? You keep it?
Well, we have a rental revolving fund in accord with the law and approved with town meeting. I don't remember the chapter of the law off the top of my head. And so, there's a specific enabling statute that allows you to rent space if you have it available, and you can take that rental income and use it to help maintain the facility. And that's what we do with it.
So, are there other, do we need to other people?
In a small sense, we have what I would call short-term rentals, like when Holy Basketball comes in to rent the gyms in the, during the basketball season in the winter, we charge them a fee so that we can cover the custodial expense.
Right. So, does all of that show up in the general fund or is that...
No, that goes through the revolving fund.
That goes through the revolving fund. And where, how does the public bill how much money is in that fund?
I can report out on that. I don't have it...
At the annual meeting, at the annual meeting, and we will show each revolving account for all different departments.
Not the schools?
Let me finish.
Sorry.
Including the schools. That will show the amount allotted for the, for each one, estimated amount. Each one is approved at the town meeting, so that it can be up to so much money spent.
There's one other part. In the budget, we have an offset in the facilities on the page there, and it'll show the amount that we're anticipating taking in for revenue, and that's how much we plan to offset expenses. So, we're lowering our budget request based on the revenue that we anticipate coming in.
So...
If you want the detail of any one, ask the town meeting. Okay?
I did, and he said that he doesn't know because he doesn't know what's in the schools' revolving funds.
Well, he knows what's allotted, and he knows, he would know what the balance is at the end of the year. He wouldn't know what it is.
So, like the Jasper program and those programs, are they revolving fund programs too?
They are.
Yeah, and so...
Those are user-fee-based programs. So, when the children sign up for that after-school extracurricular, co-curricular activity, they're gonna pay a fee, and those fees will pay the staff for that. We, you know, we don't charge them for renting the space, per se, you know, but the programs self-fund. So, if there's not enough interest from the students to run the program, we don't run it. And, you know, as an example, we used to have a program at the middle school called Masper. It, you know, sometimes goes dormant and then it comes back up again. Depends on what the children are interested in doing with the, you know, parents, and in those cases will support.
So, the people who run the programs are not school employees?
No, most of the people that are in there are school employees.
So, in life, so their salaries and benefits and whatever comes through the general fund are part of your $14.4 million this year?
There are outside people that run those programs too.
Yeah.
With his parents, there's...
That's coming through the revolving fund.
Right.
Right, so, I guess I'm trying to figure out this...
Does it ever pay a stipend?
So, some of it goes through the revolving fund and some of it goes through the general fund?
I don't know what part goes through the general fund. It's all funded through the revolving fund for Jasper and Masper.
Okay, so, but if some of those people are school employees...
Right, so that would be an additional work, so that would be a stipend. So, it's similar to being a coach. For an athletic team, everybody understands what a soccer coach does or a track coach, same type of thing. It could be a school employee that's providing that service, or it could, a regular school employee, or it could be someone that's hired, you know, just for that, that position. Or it could be a volunteer that's gone through the background check and inquiry process, and the person is doing it at no charge.
Susan, I'm gonna allow some other people questions.
I'm going.
John?
Yeah, a quick question. If you were to estimate the amount of funds spent for maintenance over the course of a year, how much of it is in the June, July, August months when the schools are not in session?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
If you're expending X amount of dollars for maintenance to structure, how much of that over the course of the year is expended in June, July, August when the school's not in session?
A pretty significant portion of it, because we do try to schedule some of the, a bulk of the maintenance when the kids are not in school.
Now, when you do that, do you incur a larger-than-average percent of maintenance cost for fiscal year 16 in June, July, and August? Or do you accrue from 15 to help pay for maintenance into 16?
There's definitely a bit of both. It depends on the type of project, and some maintenance projects, like for example, tuning up the heating system is always gonna be done in September, October. Those expenses, you know, we're not gonna be able to do with prior-year funds. For cleaning the buildings, per se, the custodians probably do 50 to 60% of the cleaning during the summer period. And the rest of the year, the bulk of the year is spent on trying to maintain that level of cleanliness. So, the deep cleaning happens when the kids aren't here, and, you know, for our cleaning products in our, you know, custodial time, yeah, that's when, you know, a lot of the maintenance occurs.
So, I guess what I'm asking is, by law, are you allowed to accrue funds from fiscal 15 into fiscal 16?
No. We can encumber funds, but that's, you know, basically if the good or service couldn't get there in time. We're not supposed to encumber funds for the sake of encumbering.
When we replaced the windows in the auditorium at the middle school, they were not, we ordered them in one fiscal year. The vendor delayed, they were not shipped. So, if you enter into the legal contractual agreement with the vendor in fiscal 15, if the goods and materials don't arrive until fiscal 16, it's legal to pay for them. So, we may purchase some cleaning supplies in June to be used in the summer that may or may not arrive in June, but where we entered into the legal contractual agreement to buy those products, then we can spend fiscal 15 money, even though they won't be using the wax until 16.
Dennis?
But as far as crossing fiscal years, you can't do that unless you've entered into the agreement.
My question, again, sort of spins off of what David was speaking about earlier, and it's a clarification in my mind of the difference between repairs and maintenance and what Matt, you were just talking about, the maintaining of the building and cleaning. I'm not thinking about that. I'm thinking about, we have three new schools, we made an enormous effort as part of a community to build all new schools, and I remember during that time how we talked about, I hope we don't let them go into disrepair. And what you all are trying to do right now is maintain the buildings in a fashion so they can continue to stand for 50 years or whatever the life of a school should be. So, this is illuminated for me, something I never even thought about, but it might be helpful to somehow articulate what are the windows? I'm thinking to myself, we gotta replace the windows at the middle school? That's sort of a horror to me, and I'm thinking, that was a new school. Okay, but that's what happens, I'm not being critical, I'm just trying to...
No, no, if I may, Dennis, the windows in the auditorium at the middle school did not open, so we replaced half of the windows. They were not done during the renovation.
Okay, all right, thank you. The point being, like, these are all part of maintaining the structures that we need. And so, I think it might be helpful in the way you design your budget to separate out those, what I always would thought would be called capital improvements or capital repairs as opposed to general cleaning, like when I'm doing something on my house. Because that would help people to understand, and I remember this, Dick, Kenny, also from advisory board, we would always say, I hope the schools are spending money to maintain these new schools. And now I'm hearing that you are, but I'm not always sure if you have enough money to do that. Because as a citizen, a taxpayer, I wanna be darn well sure that the schools will stand for the duration. So, I think this would be helpful. Again, this is a spin-off on David's point. Let's think differently about how we can get people to see the need and articulate how we can ask for their assistance to get there.
I'm quite pleased, and I think every citizen of Hull should be quite proud of the way the schools have been maintained.
That's great, and that, you know, yeah.
We would have made it a priority, and we understand that that's what people in town want, and it's important to expend that kind of money and not keep the buildings up would be irresponsible. So, I actually think that everyone in Hull should be quite proud of the way the buildings have been maintained.
But just like you take care of your own home, you know what things can be deferred and what things need to be taken care of ASAP. And that's what Dr. Terrell does, and that's what Matt does so well. And custodians will go to them and record out constantly, which I find the schools to be really, really, really clean and well-maintained. And when they come to us and say, well, you know, these windows need to be replaced, but we can't do all of them, but we're going to do the ones that are maybe in the worst condition, just like you would do at home. But they get taken care of. It's not just, okay, let's just do every single thing that we, you know, and then get in the red. It's taken care of.
All I'm suggesting is your budget may be a vehicle to let people know how that's happening.
To communicate that out.
Separating the cleaning from the works. That's all.
Yes, Sarah.
So, on page 13 on the maintenance...
Comment?
It actually talks about, kinda like, it kinda alludes to what you're asking about, Dennis. It talks about like elementary maintenance of the building, and it has a line item. It says equipment, then it talks about supplies. That would be like cleaning supplies. And then it talks about grounds, like landscaping and stuff. But the other thing is, I know that Matt does this mostly in the summer, most schools do, and in fact, they do it throughout the year. They do a lot of preventative maintenance, and I know in the past, Matt has done a presentation to us with PowerPoint showing, you know, all the various, whether it's generators or elevators or boiler work. So, there's all these preventative maintenance projects that have to go on throughout the summer.
Waterproof.
And actually throughout the school year. So, and there's a cost for that. So, that's just like, almost like, it's already baked in the cake because you have to maintain the boiler. You need to maintain your generator or elevators and stuff. And, I mean, maybe perhaps Matt in the next, maybe the next meeting or the meeting after that, he can kinda do a presentation on all the preventative maintenance and how much money. Like, I know we have a contract with an electrician.
Right.
We have a contract with an HVAC person, so you can kinda, you know, tie it all out, exactly what we spent throughout the year. Whether it's paint for the buildings, I'm sure, over the summer, you paint some of the classrooms out or the hallways, so...
Kelly?
If possible, for fiscal year 15, when we have town meeting or even April 1st haven't allocated, so you have kinda what you're using, and then you have like actually what's been spent so far. I think that in no other town budgets do that. So, you have what you've been allocating and what you've spent so far. Might be helpful for people to see that.
Okay. So, Dick?
I have one comment. I'm disappointed that you had not updated this. You've had it since November, and you knew then that you were gonna be limited, because historically you have been limited once the, once the amount is set by the town manager. That'll be 3%. And you just, from following what David said earlier, you really haven't been looking at this since that time to know where you're gonna have to cut. So, now you're gonna have two weeks to cut back to 192, and you've had six months. So, I'm disappointed, because I thought you did better than that.
You don't have yet. All right, shall we...
I'm going to close this portion of...
So, can I ask one question? So, where we go off this? So, what is the next step?
We have a school committee meeting on April 23rd, and we'll discuss it then, and...
What are we gonna do? We're gonna discuss what?
This budget and...
We're gonna discuss this budget, I think we already beat this to death, so...
I think we'll...
When are we gonna get the next, the new one? The real one, the real McCoy?
I'll have an answer to you this week.
Why's that?
I have to meet with office staff and just go over things.
All right, well, I think that we should have the budget either the next meeting, we gotta have it before town meeting.
Okay.
We're not looking like a bunch of fools without the budget there.
Susan, do you have another question?
I was just wondering, there's a plan to have a budget narrative. You had talked about doing it after the DES report, and you suggested a budget narrative. You would talk about implementing that?
Mr. Gillis did it.
Yeah, we have a two-page budget narrative. If you don't have a copy, I can send it to you.
I didn't see it. I had the FAQs, but I...
You know what? If it's not online, I apologize for that. We'll make sure it gets up online.
Okay. All right, so I am closing the budget portion of the school committee meeting, and we are re-entering the general school committee.